Good evening and welcome to the zoning Board of Appeals meeting of Wednesday, June 17, 2020. This is a virtual meeting. This is our second virtual meeting and we're all pros at this time. Before we start the meeting, I would like to announce that the next scheduled meeting for the Board of Appeals is Wednesday, June 24, 2020 at 6:00 PM. That's a regular meeting for the Board. Tonight, this is a special meeting for Comprehensive Permit 2018-18. Before we start the public hearing, we only have one item on the administrative agenda. Before we start actually the administrative, I would like to take a roll call just to make sure all the members are here, are present. And when I call your name, just indicate present after I call your name. Attorney Maderas?
Present.
Mr. Gardner?
Present.
Gardner, Mr. Gardner is with us. He had some trouble with his video, but he's on, he's present at the meeting. Attorney Human?
Present.
Dr. Iga?
Present.
Dr. Polak?
Present.
And myself, Halim Chuba, present. So we have the six members tonight. The three members sitting on this case are myself, Attorney Maderas, and Attorney Human. The next item, the first item is the administrative. We do have a request from Stantec Engineering for an amount of $5,648.40 for the off-site sewer flow assessment, additional meetings, reimbursement for Comprehensive Permit 2018-18. They submitted the invoice with the breakdown and we do have the money in the budget and we need to take a vote on this. This has to do with the review of the sewer for Comprehensive Permit 2018-18. Any of the Board members have any question?
Halim, am I to understand that this is the final payment on what is due?
I'm not sure if this is the final payment.
Well, on the invoice, it says 100% complete.
100% complete, that's probably yeah, the final payment. I didn't look at the... So that must be it, yes. And I'm sure we'll hear from the applicant after we open the public hearing on the status of the sewer and the water with DPW. I know this has been going on for a few months and this is why they're here tonight, I believe.
Right. Should we wait to hear from them first before we vote on the approval of the money or no?
I think they already spent the time. I think they'll, they need to get paid regardless whether, you know, if they need, if there's any revisions and they need to additional, they need additional funds, they would have to request an additional fund from the Board that we take to the applicant. But I think it's fair to say they spent the time on this, that we have to approve the invoice.
Mr. Chair, if I may, they were very involved in the discussions and negotiations with all of the parties, answering questions, attending meetings. We have come to essentially an agreement in principle. I think at this point, I'm in the process of drafting the permit. So the only other thing that we would need them to do is perhaps look at sections of the permit. But I think their work should be essentially wrapped up with some, potentially some follow-up. So I would recommend, you know, to get them paid now.
Thank you, Attorney York. What's the pleasure of the Board?
I'll make a motion if you want.
Yes, please.
All right. I make a motion that we approve the payment to Stantec in the sum of $5,648.40 for invoice number 1663099.
Second that motion.
Okay, seconded by Attorney Human. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can you see me now?
Yes, we can see you.
Okay. Hi, Alvin.
Great, yeah, we can see you and we can hear you.
I bow.
Okay, swell, thank you.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, just stepping again, you need to take a roll call vote on that motion because we're in remote?
Sure, sure. We'll take a roll call on the approval of the payment for Stantec in the amount of
Attorney Maderas voted in favor, yes.
Attorney Human voted in favor, yes.
Mr. Chuba voted in favor, yes. So this is, we have a unanimous vote, thank you. The next portion of tonight's meeting is the public hearing. And this is a public hearing for Comprehensive Permit 2018-18. And this, this hearing was continued from May 2020. The petition is First Dammit LLC and the property is located at State Road and Reed Road. And the applicant is requesting the approval of 288 units on 59.1 acre of parcel of land. I believe the, both attorneys are here, Ms. North and Attorney Bobrowski. At the last meeting, we, there was some still open comments or negotiation between DPW and the sewer. And at that time, I believe this has been resolved. And please give us the status of the project. This is going to be like a progress meeting, I guess.
Yes.
Attorney North?
Sure, I'll start and then I'll let Attorney Bobrowski jump in. With respect to the sewer use and payment for upgrades and improvements to the system, have an agreement in principle that we have worked out between the parties and spoken to the town manager about as well, and obviously DPW and Mr. Hickox. So that allocation of costs will be reflected in the language of the Comprehensive Permit, which I am currently drafting. So the only other outstanding substantive matter is, I think the applicant's going to give us some update on their traffic. But then is the stormwater, which after our conversation with Mr. O'Reilly today, understand is scheduled to begin, the hearing to open next Tuesday, the 23rd. They will, meeting again July, let's see, well, let me strike that. So they have a consultant onboard who will be reviewing that application. That consultant is Gus Rapazzo of Rapazzo Engineering. He has the documents and he started to take a look at it. There is stormwater and then there are 17 buildings that are in the buffer to wetlands. So they'll be looking to issue ultimately stormwater permit and an order of conditions for the construction itself. Doesn't look terribly complicated, but will take probably into July. So we hope to have that issued and resolved hopefully by the end of July. And then we can proceed to finishing up the Comprehensive Permit and unless there's anything outstanding, finishing up the hearing process and moving on to final vote and closing the hearing.
Thank you, Attorney North. We can't hear you.
Thank you. Can you hear me now, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Sorry, I was advised by the millennials in my family that I should use my iPhone and not the audio feature on the computer.
I see.
I may, I may have to give up that, I may have to give up that practice. Thanks, thanks to Charis for giving that summary. That's pretty much exactly where we are. We have with us tonight though, Jason Adams from McMahon Associates. We thought this would be a good opportunity for him to give you an update on the relations with DOT. And then we'll, we'll let Steve Giosa talk about the stormwater submittal if that suits the Board. So if you can, Jason was muted a second ago.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, great.
Good evening, Jason Adams with McMahon Associates. We've been the traffic engineer on the project. In terms of an update, we have been making efforts to meet with Mass DOT about the project in order to pursue closing the median east of the site. We have not yet been able to meet with Mass DOT. We haven't been granted a meeting with them as of yet. Our understanding in both this and other dealings with Mass DOT is that they're quite backed up with project work and are really just looking to talk about projects that have formally been approved at the local level before pursuing that. So we're here to make a commitment to continue to pursue that with Mass DOT should the project receive approval. And will, Mass DOT certainly controls the Route 6 roadway, but our approach will be to pursue closing the median east of the site and including the site improvements along the, along the frontage, including the right turn lane into the site.
Great.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Adams. I need, before we move to Mr. Giosa, just to bring us up to speed with the sewer and the water, do you have any questions for, for Mr. Adams? He's the traffic consultant. Unfortunately, they, they weren't able to meet with DOT. I know they had some issues. We had, we had some concerns about the, the location of the, also, we talked about moving the, the location of the driveway in the Westerly direction. And then also there was some issue with the U-turn or the left turn on that median that was too close to the, to the proposed driveway location. So we don't have anything from DOT on that. And this is actually, the curb cut is under the jurisdiction of Mass DOT. So not sure at this time, any of the Board members have any questions, concerns?
This is Ralph, no questions, thank you.
And, and Mr. Chair, we'll ultimately address that in the permit by essentially providing language that the applicant will just have to do what DOT directs them to do with respect to those particular issues?
Correct. I mean, DOT has, they have jurisdiction over Route 6 anyways. This is their highway and they control the curb cut. So I, I'm aware, you know, so I just, I know there was some discussions previously in the, in the other meetings with, with the, with the curb cut and the proximity to the, to the median on Route 6, so.
Well, we've been, we've been consistent, whatever Mass DOT tells us we have to do, we will do, so.
I, I agree. Any questions from other Board members for the traffic consultant or the traffic engineer?
I have no questions at this time, Mr. Chair.
Alvin Human, I have no questions at this time.
Robert Gardner, I have no questions.
Dr. Iga, do you have any question?
No question, no, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Then we can, Mr. Giosa, the floor is yours.
Hey, good evening, Steve Giosa with SciTech, excuse me. Get rid of that call. This is so much fun. As Attorney Charis indicated, we have initiated the process with conservation. If you'd like, I can share my screen. I have a copy of the overall plan that might be easier for people to get reacquainted with what we're doing.
Sure, we can do that.
Let's see if this can work for me. Yeah, we'll share that. So this is the overall site plan. And as you can see, north is oriented to the top, to the top of the drawing. And the, the entry to the site originates on Route 6, as was just discussed, and then travels down into the site. We have the looping roads through the middle of the property here, and then the units clustered around that loop road. And then coming up to the far western edge of the site where we have this little U-shaped configuration. And then the duplex units heading to the far south end of the site here. So we are, as Attorney North indicated, subject to conservation because we have 17 of the buildings, at least partially within the 100-foot buffer zone. That is an allowed orientation, but it does require conservation to confirm that we're meeting the proper grading and stormwater management measures for the site. You'll notice on the graphic, we've got some blue shaded areas here coming in near the tennis court, the tennis court building being located here. This is part of the stormwater management system. All of the general flows through the site are from north to south. So as the stormwater drains through a pipe system, it'll actually go into a secondary stormwater management basin here. We have a couple of smaller internal basins within the Ring Road area here. All of these are picking up stormwater runoff from the parking areas, the roof drains, routing them through water quality units. We are proposing, again, a little bit more robust stormwater quality treatment followed by sediment basins, detention basins for flow mitigation, and then discharge eventually into the wetlands, which are dominating this lower section of the site here. So the wetlands are primarily here. There's a pocket of wetlands in the middle of the site here. And everything generally flows north to south. On the back end of the project, we have a series of, again, catch basins, water quality units directing the runoff into a detention basin here, again, with a discharge eventually into the wetland. And then this cul-de-sac and these duplex units would drain into a very similar system here on the east side of this access drive, again, a discharge to the wetlands. And then finally, in the far south end of the project, this last cul-de-sac, again, a basin, water quality control, and then a discharge. One of the other points I wanted to make, I don't think this showed up on any of the previous plans that we presented. If you recall, the fire chief had indicated a desire to have emergency access from Reed Road, but we had also committed to the neighborhood, we would not provide unit owner access. So we originally had shown through this easement, which exists through the Holly Davidson property, our emergency access. And those owners indicated they were concerned because they do have a motorcycle area in the back and they didn't want to have emergency access routed there, even though it wouldn't really be for emergency vehicles only. The fire chief felt that having access onto Reed Road through an emergency gravel drive might be an appropriate way or mechanism to meet that requirement. So we have added that to the plan. The plan would include gated access on the uphill side with emergency breakaway barriers and gated access, again, at the lower end that the fire department would have access to, but the general public would not. So we think we're satisfying that criteria that we committed to the neighborhood with no unit access out to Reed Road, strictly emergency vehicles in the event that there's a blockage somewhere within the development and they needed to get alternate access and not come in through Route 6, this would be available for that purpose. So we wanted to make sure we incorporated that in the current plans that were presented to conservation and obviously to you folks, so that we're keeping you up to date on these edits as they become available. But essentially, the layout has remained the same. When you look at the details on the, on the overall plans, which we have submitted to your Board, there's a lot of information now regarding onsite wastewater, water, and now stormwater management and grading for the roadways. So we're really getting close to final construction level documents here. But that's where we're at. As again, Attorney North indicated, the plans have been sent to Mr. Raposo. DPW is also has a set of the plans with the drainage calculations. I'm sure they'll be doing a independent review as well. And then conservation will have an initial meeting next week. And then I'm sure we'll have a subsequent meetings once they get the reports.
Mr. Giosa, I do have a question regarding the access, the gravel road, right? The emergency access to Reed Road?
Yes.
And what's the reason? And this is a gravel road. Who's, who's maintaining, the chief is fine with the, with the, with the coverage? I mean, doesn't have to be paved? Who's maintaining that in the wintertime?
There, there is a maintenance group that will maintain all of the road systems here. Part of the maintenance will include making sure this access is maintained and cleared. Plenty of room for snow disposal utilizing the detention basins, the side areas. And in this case, we've got nothing else going in this strip of land. So this is about, I want to say it's about 300 feet, 250 feet. There's no proposed development, no units in here. There is the existing house here in the front, but again, we've offset this to the north side a little bit where the topography worked better and we can provide access. We're also looping the water main through here. Again, that was something that under the water review, they wanted to have a closed loop with the water running through. And since we're disturbing this area, it seemed to make sense to not only put the water line there, but provide this emergency access.
Yeah, no, no, I agree. I mean, emergency access is, is second, this is, this type of, of project with the number of units, it makes sense to have the emergency access. My question was why it's gravel and not paved? That's, that's my, I mean, was there any reason because, but as long as it's being maintained and being, you know, being accessible in the wintertime, it just, that's, that's my only concern because I know gravel roads are hard to maintain, harder than paved roads. If they needed an access, this is, I'm assuming it's only probably 20 feet wide or 15 feet wide just for the, for the fire truck to go through. Why it wasn't, was there a reason why? And if the fire chief is fine with it, I have no concerns, so just...
Yeah, the reason, the reason for gravel is, is when we have an opportunity to go low impact, we wanted to do that. This project has, overall for the size piece of property, not an excessive amount of impervious area. But we, you know, again, this was a mechanism to limit some of the pavement where we had an opportunity where day-to-day traffic wouldn't create a maintenance nightmare. And there is a paved apron at the entry point so that, again, entering and exiting off the public way would be protected with a paved apron at this point and obviously connecting to a paved parking lot. So the only reason was it was going to be low intensity use, may never be used hopefully, and maintained by the development company for the property.
And, and the fire chief is fine with that?
Yeah, we'll, we'll have to meet with the chief to make sure that he's okay with all the details, but this is what they, he had requested, so we provided that on the plans now.
And will you all?
I'll review with Chief Aruda.
Yeah, would you make sure to?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, just make sure that gravel is fine, you know? I mean, 300 feet of pavement is, is not really that excessive compared to the roadway system and the amount of pavement that we have. I just, my concern is just the maintenance, gravel roads are hard to maintain because, you know, you get settlement when they hit it with the, sometimes with, with the, with the blade, it might take a chunk of it to then have to go back and, you know, just, it's only maintenance issue, not, nothing, you know? So if you can just make sure he's fine with it.
All right, we'll see if we can solicit a letter from the chief before the next meeting.
Okay. Attorney North, is that, was your concern too?
Yes, I just wanted to make sure we got something in writing from the chief before the next meeting, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, that's all I have. I mean, this is being reviewed by, as Mr. Giosa indicated, this has been, this is being reviewed by the, by the town consultant engineer for the conservation and also is being reviewed by DPW with their engineering division. So I have no comments or, they have to, they have to meet the mass standard DP, stormwater management, the ten standards, the sustained practice, and I have no comments. Any of the other Board members have any comments or questions for Mr. Giosa?
Michael Maderas, I have no questions of Mr. Giosa.
Alvin Human, I have no questions of Mr. Giosa.
Mr. Gardner?
Robert Gardner, I have no, no questions at this time.
Dr. Polak?
I have one question I'd like to concur with you, Alvin, about asphalt versus the stone driveway, but I will listen to the fire chief as long as he has the options of making A or B decision. That would be nice, thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Iga?
No, thank you. I agree with Dr. Polak, this is what should be done, what should have fired and other, emergency access, which one they like to have?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Giosa, I think you can, you can turn your screen off if you want at this time? I don't think we have any questions.
Halim, Halim, if I may, I believe Ms. Linda would like to say something.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
I just have one question. There'd probably be a number of children in this complex and I was wondering if there should be some fencing or something around the basins to make sure it's not an attractive nuisance? Just something to throw out there, yeah?
Right. Yeah, that's a question that comes up a lot in residential projects. And, and the basins are essentially dry all the time, other than during a storm event, they'll surge to their flood level depending on the intensity of the storm, drain back down and then be empty beyond that. You know, fencing tends to obscure some of the natural features beyond the ponds. So, you know, where we have a maintenance operation going on here where they'll be mowing the basins, making sure the grass is properly maintained, you know, I think it can actually work really well without the fencing, but you know, it's obviously a discretionary item on the parts of Board members on whether or not that's an important feature. Again, these are not basins that are intend or designed to hold water for long periods. In fact, they are mandated to drain after a major storm event, you know, within so many hours. So it is something that will happen.
That's a good point.
How, how deep are the basins, Steve?
They're actually... They're actually very shallow. I think on average, they're probably no more than two or three feet. That's why we have so many of them.
Right.
Because we had to split them up to get groundwater separation and they're a little bit larger, but they're a little bit shallower as well.
Did you have to do mounting calculations or you're good with the separation?
You know, I don't think we did. And again, I think because of the separation, we were able to maintain to the groundwater, we normally wouldn't do that type of an analysis here unless someone thought that that was a critical issue to look at. But, you know, the basins are, again, pretty, pretty commonly designed this way.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Giosa? No. So if I, I would like to just summarize what we heard tonight. The sewer and the water are practically, the issues with the sewer and the water are practically resolved with probably like minor, some minor details that will have to go into the conditions of the comprehensive permits. But we, you agreed on, on the concept and you came to an agreement for the off-site improvements for the sewer and the water. And traffic will have to be, if we can get something from the traffic before we do the final vote, I think would be fantastic if we can get any feedback from DOT. If not, it has to be included in the conditions of the permit that the applicant will have to comply with MassDOT requirements for the curb cut. Stormwater is being, is being reviewed right now or has been submitted to Conservation and my feeling it's going to take probably two or three meetings before they issue their conditions, so. And this is being reviewed by both the town engineering or DPW and the peer engineer for the town through the Conservation Commission. So I guess at this time, we just have to wait for Conservation and correct Attorney North, we just have to wait and see what they, you know, what, if there's any changes to the layout or once they have their notice, their order of conditions from Conservation, they'll have to come back to us and hopefully at that time we'll have a draft for the conditions for the comprehensive permit, correct?
Correct. That's exactly right.
Are you, okay, are you working on the draft right now or are you just waiting? Because I know Conservation will have their own and would probably have to incorporate those in the part of the special permit, you know, so.
Yeah, I have been working on the draft and leaving the concert, that particular section, empty, but have been working on all of the other pieces that we've talked about over the last almost year. I've been working on this project with you all now, so, yes.
Okay, and the environmental, pretty much? Done or not? I mean, it's agreed on?
Agreed upon, still writing, so, you know, whether there's any details that require. So in the interim, while the stormwater permit is being looked at, I'll prepare a draft, get it to Attorney Bobrowski, we'll try to work out the details so that by the time we come back in August, I am expecting, then we should be pretty close to having agreed upon conditions and can be, you know, close to wrapping everything up.
Okay, I, we appreciate, once you have a draft with Attorney Bobrowski, if you can send us something at least prior to the meeting, even if it's two, three weeks or a month, just, I know it's going to be a substantial, probably, number of conditions on this
Yes.
project, so we would like, rather than having the information submitted to us the night of the hearing or in the afternoon of the hearing, so if we can do that, we really appreciate it. This way we
Of course.
We'll have an opportunity to look at the, at the conditions. Any, anything else? Attorney Bobrowski, do you have anything to add at this time?
No, we look forward to the next meeting, going through the conditions and wrapping this up. It's been a long haul, but I think we're very close and I thank everybody for their hard work.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the board members to either Attorney North or Attorney Bobrowski?
Robert Gardner, I have none.
Michael Maderas, I have no questions.
Alvin Newman, I have no questions. Ralph Pollak, I have no questions.
Hey, Mag, I have no questions.
Okay, so I think we need to, so looking at the conservation schedule, I think you'll probably be busy the whole month of July with conservation. So you, you want to come back in August, the first first hearing or second hearing in August? What do we, Michelle, we have, what do we have in August?
The 12th.
August 12th, okay.
And the 26th.
August 12th and both Wednesdays, right?
Correct.
Okay. Any preference, Attorney Bobrowski, Attorney?
Yes, the first gate would be, would be the best, the 12th.
Okay, August 12th?
Yes, thank you.
Attorney North, you want to, do you want to check your schedule or you're good with that?
I'm good with August 12th.
Okay, great. Then we'll need a motion to continue this hearing through August 12th. I'll take a roll call on this. We have a motion on the floor or somebody has to put a motion on the floor.
And make a motion that we continue the comprehensive permit, case number 2018-18 through August 12th, which is a Wednesday at 6 o'clock PM.
Okay.
Second that motion. Attorney Alvin Newman, I second that motion.
Okay, all in favor, aye, but then I'll have to take a roll call vote on this. Attorney Maderas?
Yes.
Attorney Newman?
Yes.
And myself, yes. So we do have the vote to continue the hearing until August 12th, Wednesday, August 12th at 6:00 PM. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, if you or your staff need any paperwork for the continuance from me, just send me an email and I'll get it to you tomorrow.
Okay, great. Michelle, I'm not sure what you need, but you need.
Yeah, I know what we need.
Yeah, we'll need something, Mark.
Okay, we'll.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, good. Good night.
Good night.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you all.
All right. We need a motion to adjourn, Halim?
Sure, more motion to adjourn.
Unless there's anything else anybody wants to discuss.
I think we're good.
Master's open?
No, it's not open. It would be nice.
The parking lot is open. No, I'm just kidding.
All right.
Chairman, Chairman, I just want to let everyone know that it looks like I'm going to be retiring at the end of July and making our way cross-country to be with our kids in Southern California, so.
Wow.
I'll probably see you next month at some meeting, but I already notified Attorney North that that will be happening, so thank you all for everything.
You're too young to retire.
Thank you.
Be careful going to California.
Yeah, nice. Well, wish you the best and hope.
Thank you. We will.
Okay, Mr. Maderas, we?
Yes, I make a motion that we adjourn tonight's hearing.
I second that motion.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
No, you still need to do a roll call. I guess they, because it's, because it's a virtual meeting, that's, that's what the governor's orders are, so we want to comply.
Michael Maderas, I vote to adjourn, yes.
Alvin Newman, I vote to adjourn, yes.
Halim Chuba, I vote to adjourn, yes, so unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen, and we'll see you next Wednesday.